I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Mrs. Arsenega. Mrs. Arsenega, would you raise your hand in the back? And if you need a listening device or interpretation services, you can go back and ask her.
Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta y la señora de las Cienegas está sentada atrás.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of September 17th, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez, Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Mayor Potem Soto.
Here.
Mayor Patino.
Here.
City Attorney, Mr. Watson, could you please give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the item 3A, instructions were provided to the labor negotiators related to the employee organizations. With respect to item 3B, instructions were provided to legal counsel with respect to the judgment in that case. With respect to item 3C, that one was a satisfactory performance evaluation, but will be carried over until after this meeting.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria?
Yes, Madam Mayor, speakers may provide public comments on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, maximum 15 minutes for public comment period. Unless the majority of the council objects, the mayor may provide speakers more or less time to speak. All comments or queries shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific member thereof pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 to A2, the Ralph M. Brown Act. No action or discussion by the City Council shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except to briefly provide information, ask for clarification, provide direction to staff, or schedule a matter for future meeting.
Thank you. We'll start public comment. Matthew Chirkop, followed by George Joe Mayorga, followed by Andrew Klein, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Mavis Di Porini. Good evening, Mr. Chirkop.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff. Matthew Chirkop, representing Santa Maria City Firefighters. I'm up here just to correct the record of something that was stated at the end of the last City Council meeting. City Staff was responding to a member of the community's comment about the stalled labor negotiations between the city and the firefighters. The statement was made that as a result of an unfair practice charge, the City Attorney provided guidance or advice to not talk with the firefighters. I just want to remind everyone of the timelines. City issued a last best and final after two meetings in early December. They didn't speak with us until February, March. Again, on April 8th, the city declared impasse with the firefighters and didn't speak with us since. The unfair practice charge was filed on July 1st. You have every right to speak with us. It just seems like City Staff might want us to suffer just a little more. So I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Joe Mayorga, followed by Andrew Klein.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mike, I'm not sure if you remember, Ballyhoo parts. Good evening. I've been a member of this community since 1988, when I moved up. I'm born and raised in Santa Barbara, so I'm still local, but less expensive up here at that timeframe. My areas of concern are, I live in the 1,000 block of West Cook Street, just down the street. It just seems that our area, our part of town, West End, is completely neglected. I can't even remember how many times I have seen street sweepers on our roads, which is a handful in many, many years. Oops, I'm sorry. Many, many years, cars parked there for months at a time. We have inches of dirt in our curb areas where you can see the cars drive and the cars parked, and all the dirt that has just accumulated, that nobody moves cars. Police just drive by. They see multiple violations that are easily seen by the naked eye. Drive by, do nothing about it. There's been some numerous, numerous, numerous accidents at West Cook and South Russell. I've called and asked for, even our neighborhood asked for, we need a stop sign placed in that intersection. Oh, we don't have enough status yet, we don't have enough, there's not enough accidents. We have daily, daily, sometimes, well, not daily, but we have a lot of accidents. People drive from Western and Cook Street to see how fast they can get from that intersection to Blosser, including city vehicles, including police department vehicles, that just, you can hear them. I'm right in the middle of the block and I can just hear them drive by. Why are we, in a sense, kind of like second-class citizens to nice, super-clean streets that you have over Hancock Park, other area, Deerfield Estates areas, all that area? Why do we get second-hand stuff in our area that is just neglectful? Code enforcement, if you guys want revenue, there's numerous for code enforcement, police fines and all that kind of stuff. Cars park in front of fire hydrants that are not even marked red. They park in all the red areas that are not supposed to be parked at. A bus stop at South Western and Cook. Can hardly see it, it is so overgrown with weeds, dead weeds, five-foot-tall weeds. Bus stop right next to it. That's a city bus stop. Why doesn't the city take care of that area? Just numerous dead vehicles on the streets that have been there for months and months and months, where I've called, park enforcement, and, oh yeah, we'll get to it. Three, four months later, nothing happens, until you kind of push buttons. I just wish you guys would, I challenge you, drive around the west side, because it doesn't seem like some of you do, and we get the neglected area. I appreciate your time, time's up, but I really would want to have our great American city looking beautiful, not a great American dirty city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I have a response.
Did you want to say something?
Mr. Mayorga? So I want to reiterate that there is this program on the city website called Neighborhood Connect Center, where you can ask for work to be done in your neighborhood. It kind of does like a ticket, it sends it to the department that it's supposed to do that, and then it tracks it for you and tells you when it was completed. If it wasn't completed, it also tells us. It's called Neighborhood Connect Center. You go in, it's ArcGIS, so exactly where you're standing, it'll point to where it is. We have people use it for graffiti, sweeping, anything like that. I would suggest you do that, because then it holds us accountable to get this done.
If I were to respond to that, I did that before, right in front of our house. We had a tree lifting up the sidewalk. I called and called, and all they did was to come back and put a little asphalt berm on it. The berm broke off repeatedly. It just kept going up, going up. We had it about two inches or so. We walked out just to go for a walk, night, just to go around the block. Spouse fell, tripped and fell, ended up in the hospital with a shoulder injury. I called and called and called and called, left numerous message, 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 message. Nobody called me back, nobody came by, until I finally got ahold of somebody different that said, if you would like to hear from my attorney for the injury that we received, just let me know where to send the bill. Next day, somebody at our house. Next day, somebody took the tree out. Next day, they came and grinded the hump down, but it's still up. It took eight months for that to happen. So if you have programs, somebody needs to work the programs.
Correct.
Not just, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, pass the buck, pass the buck, pass the buck, until somebody gets hurt. Cars parked in the driveways, blocked sidewalks. My mother-in-law's in a wheelchair, for as long as she can get through. She had to go around the car, her wheelchair tipped over, she ended up in the hospital with a broken hip. Called the police, we'll get there when we get there. Nothing's been done. So like I said, police just drive by, speed by, they don't look, there's numerous, there's hundreds of violations all up and down Cook Street, not just that street, other streets here also. But why can't we get code enforcement? Why can't we get obvious violations? It's the drivers, the cops just go by with blinders. There's numerous violations. If you want revenue for the city, there's your revenue, or there's part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we make sure someone follows up with him?
Yeah, they will, yeah, and so will I. Andrew Klein, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Mavis Di Porini.
Good evening, City officials, City Staff, and community. My name's Andrew Klein, member of San Maria Firefighters Local 2020, and speaking out once again on behalf of my fire family seeking fair compensation and treatment. First off, I want to acknowledge the community for their support in our efforts to get fair pay. You are why we exist, and we appreciate your love and support very much. Also, to the members of our fire department, thank you for making it a great place to work and your dedication to the safety of our city. It's no secret, we have more taller buildings going up in our town. To tackle fires and rescues in these buildings, we must have the ability to reach people to get them out. We have one ladder truck with three firefighters on it. We have no reserve ladder truck when our frontline truck is out of service for maintenance, et cetera. The closest ladder truck is 30 minutes away, if they're even available to respond. This is not acceptable or safe. Our department has the only fully-staffed ladder truck in northern Santa Barbara County, which responds to project calls, including into the county area. Also, our health care costs are rising, and we're the only bargaining group that has to pay out of pocket for health care. That sounds spectacular. Why are we shortchanging public safety, fire department specifically, when it claims to be your priority? Public safety is our responsibility and priority, because we do it every single day. To make public safety your priority, that means you have to support the very firefighters you're supposed to not be playing a game with. Every day that passes by, more people from our community are becoming aware of the true colors of the members of the DIES. You are all playing a game of fire department roulette. It's a matter of time before one of our members gets hurt or worse, because we don't have the proper manpower, equipment, or resources to keep my fire family safe. Please, do not allow that to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I am a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. Our NESBIT goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. The model lease has not adequately addressed the need for mobile home rent stabilization in Santa Maria, and it needs to be improved or replaced. Following the June 6th, 2022 motion passed by this council, we have been attempting to do that. Thanks to Assistant City Manager Wu, we continue the work. It is my understanding a series of community and resident outreach meetings will soon be announced. As I presented to you on August 20th, the subject of inappropriate conversion of senior mobile home parks has invaded Santa Barbara County. Following the sale of the senior park, Delciello Mobile Estates, which is located just outside our city limits, and without even consulting with the approximate 300 senior residents, the new owners decided they wanted to convert the park into an all-age community. Santa Barbara County residents have initiated an effort to get a moratorium passed preventing the conversion until a senior mobile home park overlay can be enacted like what was necessary in Ventura County. I continue to mention this because similar action may be needed to protect the senior mobile home parks here in Santa Maria. My last, my last subject is I feel obligated to once again make another comment similar to what I made at the last City Council meeting. Since there apparently has not been any significant progress, I want to again make an appeal. Let's introduce transparency regarding the firefighters' contract negotiations. The impasse was declared five months ago. Please explain to me and all citizens of Santa Maria why no mediation has begun, and what is required to find a suitable compromise between the city and the firefighters. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, I think some years ago, the City Council passed an ordinance, and I would have our City Attorney look into it, where you could not do conversions in the city of Santa Maria, so.
That's a closure issue, not the same thing.
Pardon?
That's a closure issue.
No, it wasn't closure.
We're talking about conversion to all age.
This was a conversion, but it was conversion into something else, not seniors. Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Mavis Di Porini, and I live in District 4. I'm here to get something off my chest since July regarding the cancellation of Zumba Gold and Chair Obics Health at Alvin Muscle Senior Center. The second week in July, we received an email that our instructor was no longer interested in teaching the class, and that was after we got a thing that our fee schedule was lowered to 33. It was Friday at 5:00, we got the email. Monday, most of us showed up at the senior center wanting answers, wanting to know what was going on. There was a prompt to meeting with Angela and Dennis. I guess some of us cried at the meeting, we're pouring our heart out, why, you know, this happened. Anyway, I just want to say shame on Recreation and Parks Department for harassing our instructor since we were the ones that wanted the fees lower, not our instructor, but she was being nitpicked at the center, and then for canceling our classes. Shame on Recs and Parks for showing no compassion. I guess they didn't like us crying, voicing, you know, we were just emotional that day at the meeting. Shame on Angela and Dennis for saying that us seniors should have no concern for the budget. We wanted to know where our fees were going on the classes, since it was raised from 20 to 44. I want to say thank you to Kathleen, who was maybe not fired, but she didn't feel comfortable in going back to the center to teach our classes. She had a meeting with us, and we had a discussion. She got Senior Worker of the Year in Santa Barbara County, and we thank her for her tireless effort in locating a place that would take us seniors, there was about 60 of us, and allow her to teach the same two classes. I want to say temporarily, our Chair Obics class went to St. Peter's Church, so they allow us to exercise for two weeks until we were allowed to exercise regularly now at Crunch Fitness. Thank you to Crunch Fitness for showing compassion and to take us all people in. Thank you for Senior Nutrition on waiting for a few of us to get out of class and drive over for the lunch meals and socialize. According to the Recreation website, the Alvin Muscle Senior Center is a vital resource for seniors who want to stay active, engaged, and connected to their community. The center provides a range of services and activities that are designed to meet the physical, emotional, and social needs of its patrons. The atmosphere at the senior center is different. I don't believe the above mission statement stands true. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council, for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Di Porini. Mr. Posada, can you check into that for us, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move, second.
I have a motion and a second. Having heard the motion and a second, is there any discussion? Harry Nun, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto.
Aye.
Mayor Patino.
Next item on the agenda is the annual appointments. Chief Deputy City Clerk Donna Schwartz, could you be giving the staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the request before you tonight is to make one appointment to the vacant position on the Central Coast Commission for Seniors Area Agency on Aging. I will present the committee for consideration of the appointment and the City Council's ratification. The Central Coast Commission for Seniors Area Agency on Aging has one vacancy. Staff received one new application from Midge Nikosia. The appointee will serve the remaining two-year term ending in July 2026. Mayor Patino will have the opportunity to make the nomination for the term, then ratified by the City Council.
Thank you. My nomination is Midge Nikosia. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I will accept this nomination. And any discussion?
I say, Mayor, that I called her, and she's not only willing to do the job, she has experience in this field, and she sounds very motivated, and the right kind of person that we want working with the people in Santa Maria. Thank you.
And she will be on the Central Coast Commission for Seniors, which is really, really important. People don't realize how much that need is until they get there and the resources that we have in the community. So, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. I'm sorry. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Thank you. Is Midge here tonight? Oh, there you are. Could you please stand? Thank you very much for accepting that position. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a regular business item on the sales and disposition agreement between the city of Santa Maria and the Vernon Property Group. Assistant City Manager, Mr. Wu, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We brought this item to the council last month, so I will be fairly brief as I get through the information, but I will focus my comments primarily to the questions that were brought up at the last meeting, which includes the discussion on incentives and revenues. So as matter of background, again, there was a specific plan that was adopted back in 2008 with an update in 2015. In 2020, the city issued RFP for development on underutilized city property. Vernon Group was selected in 2021, and we've been spending the last several years refining the project concepts and refining the terms of the agreements for the various parcels. The vision for downtown is a walkable downtown with a mixed-use environment, with plazas, open spaces, restaurants, and housing in close proximity. This is the overall concept plan. I kind of enlarge the lot numbers, so we know which lots we're talking about. Lot 1 is the location where we currently have Farmer's Market on the west side of Broadway. Lot 2 is the Promin Park site. Lot 3 is the Little Plaza north of Bank of America, and Lot 4 is the parcel that's west of Lincoln. Lot 1 is really the location of most of the amenities, with 375 housing units, but also commercial uses and the open space and plaza areas. Lot 2 is where we have our affordable housing project, 160 affordable housing units. Lot 3 is identified as the Alvin Newton Project, in a mixed-use concept, 82 apartments and ground-floor commercial. Lot 4 is an option after progress on lots 1, 2, and 3. So in total, it's approximately 600 residential units over lots 1, 2, and 3, with over 15,000 square feet in commercial uses with plazas, passeos, and landscaping. This is another bird's-eye view of the concept. Again, this is higher density, this is an urbanized environment adjacent to Main and City Staff had worked with the applicant on providing parking to the sites, even though they're small sites, and so this is just a plan that shows ground-floor parking or podium-style parking in addition to commercial and housing uses. More images, this is a rendering of Heritage Walk as part of Lot 1. This is a top-down view of Lot 1, showing the structure, the building footprint, the plazas, and the open spaces. This is a site plan for Lot 2, this is the Affordable Housing Project. These are elevations, this is the one for Lot 2, elevations of the Affordable Housing Project. It's a six-story building. Another rendering, and this is from the intersection of Main and Broadway. This is a rendering looking from Main Street. And these are elevations for Lot 3, the Alvin Newton Apartments, which was previously approved. Again, this is on the corner of Main and Broadway, the southeast corner. More renderings. As part of the Alvin Newton design, there was an area that's carved out as a memorial plaza for fallen firefighter Alvin Newton. plaza for fallen firefighter Alvin Newton. To get into the discussion on incentives, there's an incentive for the land price. There's a discounted price of $120,000 per lot. This is the discount compared to the appraised values back, that was done in 2019 and 2020. There's a discount on the impact fees as well as the planning and building fees. A 50% discount on mitigation fees for various categories, including City Hall, Corporation Yard, Police, Fire, Traffic, Library. The total dollar amount of these fee incentives is over $2 million, 2.3 million. And these concessions are tied to performance requirements. So these performance requirements are built into the development agreement, and they also include timing and milestones. So I'm about to pull up a couple of slides that look like spreadsheets because these, this is an analysis of the fee incentives and the revenues that we anticipate for this project. So for lots one, two, and three, as mentioned, there is a fee incentive of 2.3 million. The note that the city is not paying any money out, these are discounts on certain categories of development impact fees. The fees that the applicant will pay is about 8.5 million. This doesn't include the additional fees paid to the school districts. If you include fees for the school districts, it's about 15 million, but the discount is 2.3 million. Now, the impact fees, impact fees are collected to fund future facilities, and so for the various categories such as police and fire, these are fees that we will collect to fund future facilities for police and fire, in this case, equipment or a future station. This, these are one-time, the impact fees are one-time. As far as revenue is concerned, revenue is projected for lots one, two, and three at 1.3 million per year. This number comes from anticipated increase in property taxes based on assessment, reassessments of the properties. Lot one, it would be reassessed at about 135 million. Lot two, 54 million. Lot three, at about 29 and a half million. With reassessment of these properties, we anticipate to collect about 279,000 in property taxes. In addition to property tax, there are anticipated sales tax to be generated by the new commercial uses, based on the square footage of the commercial uses that would be built and the anticipated types of uses. We expect another $125,000 annually from the commercial uses. We also anticipate additional sales tax from the new residents that would live in downtown. And so this is based on a per capita dollar amount calculated, there's a sales volume figure that's calculated based on the anticipated future residents and the per capita spending, and that's about $920,000 for the 2,000 residents. So you add these three buckets, property tax, sales tax from the new uses, per capita sales tax spending, and we have the figure of 1.3 annually for the use. So when we, in looking at the incentives provided, 2.3 million in fee incentives, we would recover the 2.3 million in incentives in a little bit less than two years. If we were to include the value of the land as an incentive, that's an additional $2 million. So the, the time to offset the incentives that includes both the fees and the land value, it's a little bit less than four years. Now, this does not include economic impact analysis, it's, it's, there are usually many, many factors. This does not include anticipated improvements to the area or new businesses that we would anticipate would come in as we revitalize an area, introduce a new environment, and so adjacent businesses such as the mall or businesses along Main Street or along Broadway. The idea of this project is to be a stimulus and a catalyst for the central part of Santa Maria, and so this analysis does not capture what we hope would happen, which is the introduction of new businesses to the area. This is simply isolated to this project that's before you tonight. Welcome. Any additional questions the council may have? I know the applicant team is here, and they are also available for questions. The recommendation before you is the approval of the sales and disposition agreement for the surplus land in downtown. That includes lots one, two, and three, with an option for Lot Four. This concludes staff's presentation. Welcome. Any questions you have?
Any questions from the dais? Okay, we have seven speaker slips. Matthew Chirkup, followed by Carly Castillo, followed by Terry Paredes, followed by Kevin
Good evening, City Council, City Staff. Matthew Chirkup, representing not only the Firefighter Memorial Stakeholder Group, but also the firefighters in town. Since the last meeting about a month ago, I've raised some, some questions here for you to consider. I also brought up the fact that the stakeholder group has been kind of left in the shadows for a little while. I had to reach out to the Vernon Group myself. They provided me some reassurance about the Firefighter Memorial, and we had a good conversation. As I said last meeting, we are not opposing this project. Downtown needs revitalization. The city needs revitalization. I just don't know if this skeleton group, skeleton crew at City Hall is going to make this happen. You know, we, we're, as the firefighters, we're understaffed to protect such investment in downtown, and those are the services that, that you're tasked with providing investors, residents, and the community. An investment in downtown is absolutely needed. There's too many vacant buildings. There's, there's too much that needs to be fixed. But to invest in a project like this downtown, you also need to invest in your services, and that includes police and fire. We just saw up there on the screen 200 and, I think it was $90,000 towards the fire department. That's nothing. That, that doesn't get us a response unit. That doesn't get us staffing. National standards say we should be able to put 26 firefighters there within eight minutes, 90% of the time. We can't achieve that standard anywhere in the city. That's a safety issue for me and my, my folks. If there's an issue there, if there's a fire there, we're behind the eight ball. We're risking getting hurt. We're risking someone else getting hurt, someone from the community. So I would urge you to not only invest in downtown, but to invest in the services that make the downtown safe. I can't say this enough, 54 years ago, on the corner, on the southeast corner of Main and Broadway, the Bradley Hotel fire, Alvin Newton lost his life. We're setting the stage for something terrible to happen, and once again, you need to invest in the services that you provide to protect this infrastructure, the community, the business community investments, and your own employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly Castillo, followed by Terry Paredes.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, good evening.
Hi. I just wanted to say I am personally opposed to this development project, the way that it is proposed. I think that offering these just supremely valuable parcels for such a low price is insulting to people who work for every piece of whatever they have, who have to accept the answer no. Your fire department is asking apparently for a ladder truck at the same meeting that you're proposing a six-story, low-income housing. That doesn't really make that much sense because they're going to need the ladder truck, and the low-income housing is not going to generate the revenue. That aside, I know that the Vernon Group wants to attract young professionals. I hire personally young professionals, high-paid nurses, other medical professionals, and never have any of them said, oh, I want somewhere cooler to live, ever. They appreciate the cost of living in Santa Maria. They're happy to commute back and forth. It's never, I've never heard this from their mouth. Never have I heard one of these people say, man, I wish there was just a coffee shop I could walk to. They don't care. They spend so much time working. When they leave and they go on a trip, that's when they are really able to use the work that they put into their life. You know, they're not thinking about the quality of their life coming from, I don't want to say not necessarily a walkable downtown, I mean, that's nice. Just the way that this is proposed is a disservice to the people who really pour themselves into caring for the elderly and who pay through the nose for social services. I think that this would be better afforded and would just be something that the rest of the community could really enjoy than this particular type of development, especially at this time for this price. That's all.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Honorable City Council Members, City Staff, and to all residents, I, Deidre Baudis, am here today to express my deep concern about the long-awaited downtown revitalization project, which, as you know, has been delayed for years. While I understand that we are in the midst of an election season, it is disheartening to see that misinformation is being spread to slow this process even further. I ask that you not allow political motivations to impede the progress of this much-needed project. I encourage each of you to get proper, to get to properly informed, and I have done my due diligence to host forums with the developers at my restaurant to inform neighbors and residents about the project. Sadly, we've learned that false information is being spread, particularly on social media, on these chismi groups and such the like, by candidate-seeking office. Chismi in Spanish, for those of you that don't know, means gossip, so that's not cool. We must remember that a house divided cannot stand. So I ask, have you personally met with the developers to understand their connection to Santa Maria and the benefits they offer? Did you know they are contributing over 7 million to our schools because of this project? That's a huge, huge, you know, positive. As a longtime business, as a longtime business owner and staple in the heart of downtown, I can tell you that we are ready and excited to welcome this project. It will create the perfect environment for small businesses to grow and thrive. With the added foot traffic from new residents, workers, and visitors, local shops, restaurants, and services will flourish, making downtown the beating heart of our city once again. But this is not just about benefiting existing businesses. I know firsthand that the Chamber of Commerce has been working tirelessly to promote Santa Maria as a destination for tourists, and this revitalization project is exactly what we need to reach that next level. By creating a more attractive and lively downtown area, we will finally offer tourists the experience they're looking for, beautiful spaces to explore, unique shops to discover, and local restaurants to enjoy like mine. The more foot traffic we attract, whether from locals or tourists, the more revenue flows back into our city, benefiting everyone. This is a win-win for Santa Maria. The impact of this project will go beyond economic growth. A thriving downtown also fosters a sense of pride and community. It's a place where families can come together, where entrepreneurs can seek their dreams realized, and where our rich cultural heritage is showcased for all to see. We are at a pivotal moment, and now is the time to invest in our future, to create a downtown that draws people in and makes them want to stay, and to give our businesses the opportunity to grow and succeed. With that being said, I ask, what is the holdup? The need to revitalize our downtown is long overdue, and yet here we are, still waiting. By the time this project is complete, I may be close to my retirement. I say that sarcastically. Meanwhile, surrounding cities are thriving. It's time we follow their lead and make Santa Maria a more desirable place for residents, tourists, and businesses alike. In closing, I urge you to vote yes on this project and see the positive impact this will have on our community. The success of my business and the success of our city are intertwined. Now is the time for positive change. From one military family to another, I stand here to support the Vernon Group and their efforts to make our hometown a thriving and desirable place once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, Kevin Walters, followed by Eric Sowers. Good evening, Dr. Walters.
Good to see you. I'm, I'm making a note not to ever follow Terry again. That was impressive. I'm, I'm here in a dual role, partially as my role of the college president and my role on the Santa Maria Valley Chamber. I was actually on the screening committee years ago, I've forgotten how long ago it was, that sort of narrowed down the field that the city could choose from. And what I saw in that process was the opportunity to transform our downtown area into something that I was familiar with almost a dozen years ago. I lived in, I moved here from Livermore, California, and Livermore transformed their downtown with restaurants and small shops and places where little pocket parks where families in the evenings could come and enjoy dining outside, and their kids would run and play. My own son spent many a Friday or Saturday evening in downtown Livermore, running and playing with other children that he had never met, and it was just a great family environment that we were in. More importantly, though, from the colleges' perspective, we are having a hard time finding places for young professionals to live. We hire new faculty members who come to town, and often they struggle to find housing, they're renting rooms from other faculty members, they're just trying their best to get through a couple of years so that they can afford a place to live and find a place to live. We are also hiring local students who graduate from our, our program, transfer and come back to work for us, and they go back to living at home because they can't find a place to, to rent. And I, I feel like when we talk about affordable housing, only in California would we consider $1,800 a month affordable housing. So we're really trying to find places for our staff to live and places where we can actually grow our college and be better service to the community. So we're supportive of the project, and we would like to see it moving forward as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Eric Sowers, followed by Ken Dalebout.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Staff, Community Members. My name is Dr. Eric Sowers. I'm the Dean of the College for Healthy Communities at AT Steel University, and I'm a member of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber. On behalf of our university chancellor and our California campus president, I'm here to speak in support of the downtown project, mostly because of our need for housing. We have significant needs for housing for our students and our faculty and our staff. Obviously, the low inventory of housing is a problem in and of itself, but also because of what that low inventory does to prices. Our students are on fixed budgets, and as they're looking for housing opportunities, it's incredibly difficult for them to find places to stay while they're here doing their education. It's also very difficult as we try to recruit faculty from outside of the area to serve our students, to recruit them to the area based on limited housing options available to them. Our students and faculty and staff are also excited about the opportunity for a safe environment where they can live and play, and this project will provide the housing and the commercial growth and gathering spaces to provide an experiential environment for them as well. them as well. So we support this proposal as part of helping to grow and build a healthy community here in Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Dalebout.
Ken Dalebout, Vice President, Strategy and Operations for Marion Regional Medical Center and Dignity Health here on the Central Coast. So I speak on behalf of Dignity Health. As a not-for-profit, faith-based provider of health care, Dignity Health, it has an interest and has a long history of promoting healthy communities, of thinking beyond just taking care of people in our facilities. As an organization, we support the development of housing in that mode of supporting development of healthy communities. Research quotes, there's very several components to building healthy communities: access to education, quality and safe housing, employment, financial security, social engagement, clean and safe environment, and access to health care. Housing is critical and is foundational to many of these other components. The Central Coast has an extensively documented and publicly communicated shortage of housing. Without addressing this shortage, our community will not be able to provide the housing for new business owners, attract young professionals, and support our core workforce. This need is for both our current residents and new employees to staff key positions in critical public service. The lack of housing threatens employment and financial security. Without the well-planned neighborhoods, social engagement is left to chance. The development of a downtown creates an attractive, planned approach to creating healthy, safe, and an environment that encourages social interaction. It is attractive to health care workers and professionals that want to live in Santa Maria and support the health care environment here. The hospital is located nearby, and we lease other properties near the downtown area. We'd love to see this area revitalized. Additional housing will organically drive enhanced tax bases and economic development and will support the development of future public infrastructure and education. An area of specific concern to Dignity Health is our inability to recruit health care workers to the area. We have offers routinely denied because of the high cost of housing. The burden of unemployed and medical professionals puts at risk our ability to maintain and create a sustainable workforce. To compound this concern, the forecast for our region includes continued growth. Our concern at the hospital is that we, without additional housing, will not be able to adequately staff our facilities to address the demands of the current and future increased population. The lack of housing puts at risk a quality health care system. I therefore urge the City Council, on behalf of Dignity Health, to support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, and fellow citizens. My name is Manuel Paredes, and I stand before you today, not only as a longtime resident of Santa Maria, but also the owner, along with my wife, of my restaurant. I cherish part of our community for many years. I'm here to express strong support for the resolution to revitalize downtown Santa Maria and transform it into the city center we all know it can be. My family and I have called Santa Maria home for over 40 years. I remember a time when our downtown was vibrant, bustling with activity and true reflection of the community spirit. However, in recent years, we have all witnessed a decline of that central space. Today, our downtown struggles plagued by issues like homelessness, gang activity, and a general feeling of neglect. This is not the Santa Maria we want or deserve. This proposal offers a unique opportunity to revert, to reverse that decline and to create a downtown that will once again serve as the heart of our city, a revitalized city center that can bring renewed pride to our community, attract new businesses, create jobs, and offer a space where families and visitors alike can enjoy all wonderful things our city has to offer. I frequently have family members visit from out of town, and they often ask me, "Isn't Inos Ranch downtown Santa Maria?" Sadly, I have to correct them by saying, "No, that's just what we call Chicken Alley." The fact is, our current city is overrun by fast-food chains and poorly planned development highlights the need for a cohesive vision, a vision that can be, that is this development and can help, we can all realize. Voting yes on this initiative is about more than just approving a project. It's about reinvesting in our future and making downtown Santa Maria a true gathering pace, place for our residents and visitors alike. This is an opportunity to showcase a vibrant culture and a unique charm of our city, something that we can all be proud of. Let's not miss this chance to reclaim our downtown and transform it into a city center that reflects our shared values and dreams for the future. I urge you to vote yes on this resolution and help bring a new life to Santa Maria. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the dais? If anybody wants to say anything, okay. Did we have any, anything else? I had all this, this concludes the public comment on this. So I was, I was curious, because I thought there was, there's no prep for the presentation, Mr. Wu, at all? Okay.
Madam Member, no.
Okay. Okay. I will, I will make comments on this. It seems like... I don't know. I didn't see anything on here.
Did you guys have a presentation?
Did you have a presentation?
We did, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to step up to the microphone then?
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Council. My name is Brad Vernon. I'm along, I'm here along with my brother Brett Vernon and Dave Alpern with the Vernon Group, and we're, we're excited to be here after a long process. I, I liked something that Mr. Wu said during his presentation. This agreement is a catalyst to the downtown, and I, I believe that entirely. I remember back in the 90s, growing up here and coming to Mervyn's and buying clothes and shopping at the mall, and I remember how busy and vibrant it was. It's not that way anymore. Most days, the parking lots are empty, and it's, it's a huge paradigm shift in, in how people live, how they shop, and how towns, how towns grow. The, the City Council, back in 2008, determined that something needed to be, needed to be done. They came up with a specific plan, and in 2020, we brought what was our vision forward to the city. And we're extremely excited about what we brought. We engaged multiple people, architects, the community, and what we came up with is a transformative, very unique, forward-thinking plan for downtown. And it's very bold, and we don't see it in a lot of places. I'd like to, I'd like to touch on some points with what the project is, and then I'll briefly touch on the timelines till now and going forward, and then also I want to touch on why this is a huge economic benefit to the city. So here is the downtown. I'm going to have trouble seeing this. Let me get my glasses. So the lots in question tonight are 1, 2, 3, and 4. These are the city-owned parcels, and this is part of what the development agreement is addressing tonight. In addition to that, we privately hold lots 5, which is the old Mervyn's Building, Lot 6, which is Boot Barn, and Lot 7, which is the other key corner to the downtown district. With our plan, and what we're planning to eventually develop, is an active, vibrant downtown. There's over 200,000 square feet of outdoor space. It's going to be improved, gathering spaces, spaces for events, et cetera. In addition, and the cornerstone of this project is going to be on Lot 1. There are going to be up to 375 units, 150 of which are going to be a hotel, and we did hear comments from City Council that they'd like to see the ability of individual ownership. So in that particular site, the other residential units are going to be condos. The, and I do want to point out, so Chun did a great job of covering what is included in the specific parcels that are part of this development agreement. But in what I'm talking about here, I'm talking about the public and private developments across the entire area. So the numbers start to grow in magnitudes. This is a little bit of project evolution. I've, I've been doing this business for 30 years now, started building apartment, multifamily projects, and subsequently mixed-use projects about 18 years ago. And it's pretty interesting, the change that we have seen it go through. It, it used to be that it was just your basic garage apartment, and, and that was satisfactory. And then in 2016, we started doing a lot of amenity-rich projects. What we have seen a lot of, and we are presently doing, including what we're looking to do in the downtown center, is, is true mixed-use projects, where people go there, they live. This becomes a, a regional draw. We, we look to draw people from outside of the area to come and enjoy these type of Last year, in 2023, we went to Santana Row up in San Jose, and this is a, a very bold project that is nationally recognized for the public-private partnership, very similar to what we're looking to do here with the city's participation on downtown. It's become a destination. It's, it is a different type of living. It is not a single-family home. It's not for everybody, but it is, and for those of you that were there on the tour, you all know, it is, it is a vibrant, incredible place, and it's something that is going to bring downtown back to downtown Santa Maria. So we've built, in the past few years, we've built a couple other projects in the, in the area. We've done 220 units in Orchid with a couple different product types. We just finished the Elements Apartments, which is a true mixed-use community of 167 units and about 30,000 square feet of commercial over by the airport. It's been extremely well-received, and we look at it as a, almost a test case for what could be the downtown. In terms of where we stand on our, our current progress, the, the Lot 3, which we already have a development agreement on, we are quickly making headway, and our, our ultimate goal is to be construction-ready by early 2025. The Lofts project is a little bit ahead of that right now. We're, we're hoping to have permits within potentially the next 60 days and be groundbreaking in 60 to 90 days. One thing I would like to mention with the Lofts is its success, the, the renovation of the Mervyn's Building, it is imperative that we move forward on the downtown development agreement, and we have this master plan in place so that we do not end up with an island of residential and a parking lot. So I'll, I'll go through this really quick. Back in 2019, the, the city put out the RFP. We went through the competitive process. We received that award in January 2021. We have diligently been working through the DA. In 2022, we got Lot 3 completed. 2020, March of 2023, we received entitlements for the private Lofts project, and we are quickly working through the others towards our 2025 start dates. Moving forward into the future, I would say that the, the key to this entire project is, is the Lot 1. It's the, it's the condos, it's the commercial, it's the paseo that it creates, and of course, the, the hotel that's there. In order to get there, we need that catalyst. We need, we need to put residents in the downtown area, and that's what the Alvin Newton Apartments Project and the Lofts Projects will do. In addition to that, we look to move as quickly as possible on the Lot 2 affordable and on the Boot Barn redevelopment. Ideally, by the time we get to early 2029, we have completion of the majority of the So this chart was in response to some of the questions and concerns about revenue. And this builds on what Mr. Wu had on the city lots. This includes all of the lots. And as you can see, we conservatively reach a annual revenue in 2030 of north of $2 million a year. In addition to that, the DIM fees, which do include school fees, will be $26 million paid all, over all of the public and private projects. The cumulative tax revenue and city fees will be north of $30 million by 2030. Again, coming back to what we're trying to accomplish, this is something different. It, it's unique, it's vibrant, and it's going to put the downtown on the map again. That's what we're trying to do here. Happy to answer questions. I know that my brother Brett would also like to say a few words, and Tony Mares, our property manager that manages all of our current assets, is here to answer questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Oh. Yes. Ms. Aguilar Hernandez has questions.
Yes. You mentioned that there is a hotel. What lot in what phase of the project is that going to occur in? And what is the commitment from you guys to build that?
So the hotel is going to be located on the south portion of Lot 1. We'll get this. Is it not working? The south portion of Lot 1, there, there's a hotel tag over the top of it. The northerly portion is going to be mostly condos and retail, but that southerly portion will have a second-level podium public space, and that ties into the existing bridge that is there right now going over to Macy's. So that, that is the hotel location, and that would be part of the Lot 1 phase that... Yeah, so Lot, the Lot 1 entire phase, we're looking at completion in early 2029.
Early 20 what?
2029.
And that's the completion of the hotel?
Correct. The completion of the hotel and the 225 units of condo.
The reason why I ask is because I'm interested in the bed tax that the city would get from that, so that's really important, that we get a timeline as to when that would be completed, and we can start to have people from out of town stay downtown and spend their money in the downtown area. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the holy grail, for sure.
Ms. Soto?
My question is directed to, to city staff. Can you explain to me a little bit about the negotiation process and how that would look if we were to... And how that would look if we were to move forward with the agreement that's before us?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so this is a sales and disposition agreement. This is an agreement for the developer to build a project. In exchange for the project, we provide the land at a certain price and terms based on performance. And so those are described and identified within the agreement for the various lots, Lots 1, 2, 3, and option for 4. So within each of the lots, there's a description for a range of how many housing units, square footages for commercial uses, open space, plazas. So all that is embedded within the development agreement. The future projects will still come before the City Council. These projects will require downtown permits. Now, the only one that has already received a downtown permit is Lot 3, Alvin Newton. That came before, that went to planning committee of City Council previously. But Lot 2, the affordable project on Perman, Lot 1, that includes the, most of the amenities, still needs entitlement, still needs a downtown permit. So that will go before the decision-makers at a future date. But this is just the agreement. This is the agreement for a developer to build a project in exchange for land based on terms and performance measures.
At the last City Council meeting, if I remember correctly, Vernon Group didn't promise, but mentioned that they would be willing to to cover the full cost of public safety. Is that still something that you all are interested in doing? And is that something that can still be negotiated as part of the terms?
I think that that is something that we could do. I would like to back up from that a little bit, though. One of the things that's, I mean, this is a massive investment for us. And in addition to where we started in 2020, there were additional requirements as we moved forward from that, one of which is that we need to park a significant amount of the projects on-site. That cost is, it's over $11 million in podium that we have to put on-site.
But I don't understand what that means. Is that like the material that needs to be on the site?
It's for the parking structures. Yeah, so it's similar to the podium structures that are at the mall right now. Where actually, we had to, between 2020 and the last couple of years, we've had to revise the project to incorporate that parking. That's a massive cost. It is an unsustainable cost for development in the city of Santa Maria because of, the rents would have to be too high to fully cover that if there's not any type of subsidy. So I think it, we are absorbing that entire cost, and it's massive. I would say that if it's imperative that we pay the extra $100,000 or $200,000 for the fire, I would say that we're willing to do that, we'll find a way through it. But in addition to the podiums, there's 200,000 square feet of public area that we're going to be improving on our dime. I mean, that can easily go above $2 million for that. So we are doing a lot. This is not the best environment to be a developer in with what's been going on in this world. A lot has changed since 2020, so we do need to pinch the pennies. It has to be viable to the banks and our investors.
When you mean the 200,000, is that, that's not Alvin Newton Memorial, right? We're talking about the cost, the cost for police and fire to cover that area. I think it's based on the numbers that Mr. Wu provided us.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, so there's some estimates that were provided for development impact fees. If we were to look at the incentive for the development impact fees for the police and fire categories for Lots 1, 2, and 3, it's $112,000 for police, $154,000 for fire. If you add to, it's about $266,000 in development impact fee subsidies for the police and fire categories.
And that's something that you all would consider finding a way to pencil in?
Yes, we'd consider it. One thing that definitely happens, especially in this interest environment, is we have to attract capital and banks that want to invest in this project. And I know that we're talking about millions of dollars, and now we're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars. And really, one of the big things that happens is, at the beginning of these projects, is these very little pieces that are chipping away at the cost of a project. And so my concern would be, if we are willing to consider that, I would hope that we could add in, we have performance milestones, and that we ask for more time in those milestones because we're in a pretty bad interest financial market right now. And so, yes, we can look at that, but I think the thing that we're afraid of is going further down the road, and we're not able to attract capital like we were in 2020 or 2021. And so by giving us a little bit more time in each project, I think we could then consider that. But that's, it's kind of like, we're giving something up, but we're getting a little bit more safety because we are, believe it or not, on very razor-thin margins of attracting the capital to come and invest in these, which is both equity and debt.
Right. My other question is around the affordable housing. I know that one of the lots, Lot 2, 160 units, all affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay. Are any of the other lots, Lots 1 and 3, going to have affordable housing or a mix of?
So the Surplus Lands Act requires 25% affordable on all of the projects that we're doing. And so if there's not enough affordable on Lot 2, then we will be required to add more into the other lots to equal that 25%. And that's one of the benefits of having it wrapped into a bigger development agreement, so.
You said 25 or 45? 25?
25. And one of the other key points and why we have done the consolidation has to do with bank financing. And there's a lot of very attractive financing when you're doing a fully affordable project. And it's significant. And what it allows us to do is secure more financing against the other projects to bear the burden of the $11 million of podium parking that we're having to build on Lots 2, 1, and 3. So it's, if the affordable is spread throughout it, the economics do not work plainly.
When you said the 160 units, are those studios? Are there those one-bedroom, two-bedroom? I know that we're, I'm probably getting ahead of myself because we're not at the conception.
Ms. Soto, you need to speak.
They're a mix.
Thank you.
They're a mix, and it's studied by the affordable housing consultants. And so it goes all the way from ones to threes. It's really the affordable housing HUD dictates kind of what the ratio needs to be and what is needed in those areas. And so a lot of it is looking for affordable families. And that's why there's actually a lot of bigger units in that affordable part of the project.
And another point is that you have to have like-for-like. So we cannot create, let's say, 160 micro-studios and then have a bunch of other three-bedrooms that are not affordable. If we have X percent of three-bedrooms, it's required that you have X percent of three-bedroom affordable units on a prorata basis.
Got it. Okay. The reasoning for my questions, and I'm sure you can see where my questioning, where it's stemming from, is the concerns that I've heard from my colleagues really stem from the current financial position that the city is in, and how are we going to cover costs for an influx of new residents in the downtown, primarily with, how are we going to cover the cost for police and fire? And I know that we saw this slide, which was really great, and the numbers that are, that Mr. Wu also presented. But this is where my line of questioning is really coming from. You know, the concerns that I've heard from my colleagues, the concerns that I've heard from residents, as well as the concern for just not enough affordable housing. And so I think that, I don't know how tonight's vote's going to go, but it really sounds like those are some of the biggest areas of concern for my colleagues. And if there's any wiggle room there, that would be fantastic.
So now there's affordable that's, like prescribed. And then there's affordable by design.
Like market versus like threshold?
One's deed-restricted affordable, which is, that's what we're looking at Lot 2. Affordable by design is kind of a development term where, hey, maybe we're looking at the smaller units, or we're trying to make smaller something a little bit more affordable. It's not deed-restricted, but instead of you, you know, say, having an 800-square-foot studio, it's a 400-square. And it becomes just a little bit more affordable, just by design. And so a lot of the other units throughout the project do have that. And that is, that's why, you know, we have a little bit smaller units in some of the market rate stuff to accommodate that, where a lot of these younger professionals, we're hoping that they go down to the restaurants, they activate the area down below, and they don't need a big full kitchen. So, and they're walking, they're saving money, doing all that, so.
Thank you.
I have a question. What does affordable mean in the rents that you've been putting into your calculations?
For the deed-restricted?
Yes.
The, I believe it's a combination of low and very low. I don't believe there's any moderate in that project.
Do you have the, did you calculate those numbers?
Off of the, I mean, we don't have it here, but they're published.
Mr. Wu probably has the numbers, because that's where I get them from.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, according to the HUD figures for a family of four, the medium, the median income for Santa Barbara County is about $119,000 for a family of four. Now, typically deed-restricted affordable housing, it's based on AMI, area median income. Very low would be 30%, and low would be 60, something you'll see, 70, 80% AMI. And so it's, and the households are not expected to pay more than 30% of their income. So it's, you take the area median income, multiply that by the income level, whether it's 60%, 70%, 30%, and whatever that number is, divided by 12 for the rent that they can charge. Nowadays, affordable rents, $2,000, but even up to $2,500. It could be, would still, may still be within the affordable category for a family of four based on area median income of $119,000 for a family of four.
So I just did a rough math. $119,000 times 30% equals $35,700, divided by 12 is $2,975. Is that the rent that we would be talking about for low affordable?
Well, I don't know if you multiply by the income level. Did you do 60% or 70%?
I did 30%. I can do 60%.
So let me, but that's still at the median income. So you have to do, you have to do 60 or 70% of that median income, then multiply that by the 30%.
Do you want to talk?
I also believe the 30% calculations for all living expenses, not just the rent. So you have to take into account certain living expenses that go into that. So it would actually, the rental rate would be lower than the 30%.
So the rents that we're talking about are less than the 30%?
That's my understanding.
So it's less than 29?
30% is all living expenses. That's what you're supposed to allocate it towards. That's correct. So it would be less, the rent would be less than that.
So the rent is less than 29.75 a month? Okay. Now, you mentioned parking. Is this non-exclusive parking?
So with regard to the condos, you're required to have exclusive parking. So they would have exclusive parking. We would likely have assigned parking for the apartments. The hotel would, of course, be for the hotel. And the commercial areas of parking would be non-exclusive.
Now, what commercial space is included in each parcel? So under the development agreement, when you build it, is that retail space as well? Or is that restaurant and services? So in particular with each lot, what is going to be commercial versus housing, right? And is that going to be sales tax, or is it going to be restaurant and services?
I think, I would imagine we'll see a good mix of retail and restaurant and services. I think for it to be a very viable location that, you know, is a space-making place, the restaurants are critical to it. I think in Lot 1, I believe we have about 15,000 square feet. That will, there will also be some quasi-public areas that are within the hotels, such as a restaurant and service within the hotel, pool areas, et cetera. Lot 3 is approximately 5,000 square feet. We would like to have at least some portion of that be restaurant. The Lofts, the Fallis-Mervyn's Building, does not have any commercial in it. And then Lot 2 does not have any commercial in it, correct?
Has services.
It has services.
Lot 2 has services?
Lot 2 has services.
So it's, what are you intending for the services?
It will be community areas, gym.
It's going to be low-income services for the affordable community. So a lot of it will be like employment, education centers. Kind of want to say, those exact services aren't laid out yet, but that's a part of all of the affordable communities, that's part of the financing. And if I can circle back on your earlier question, I just looked this up. And I'm sorry, I'm just going to machine gun you some numbers really quick. But 60% affordable in Santa Barbara County, a one-bedroom is $1,830. A two-bedroom is $21.96. A three-bedroom is $25.37. And a four-bedroom is $28.30. Those are the 60% AMI affordable.
A four-bedroom is how much?
Sorry. $28.30.
But we won't have any four bedrooms?
Yeah, there's no four bedrooms.
There's, and those are just the published kind of 60% based off of the AMI limits that are de-distributed, that the affordable partner that we have, that we're currently working with, we have an application in with the city. They are, this is all they do. There's a whole lot of, you know, communication with HUD and a lot of consultants that are just looking over us, making sure that we're following these limits and making sure there's a unit size minimum. So I talked about affordable by design. There's like a size requirement minimum. So you can't, like a one-bedroom, you can't say go, I don't know what the limit is, but you can't go less than, say, 600 feet on something. And it's so that you're not, it's so that affordable developers aren't going and saying, all right, I have a one-bedroom, but it's only 100 square feet. You know, it's to protect, all these protections are kind of built into that program. And that's why it also makes a lot of sense to go and consolidate it over into one project. Aside from the financing, we have, that's what the services are for on the ground floor. They're to help that community, to help them thrive, and hopefully ultimately move out of that community and not be living below the AMI limit.
Okay. And you gave us a timeline for the completion of each project, but a question that I have is, why are all the parcels needed now instead of one parcel at a time so that we can see the progress? And if the city only agreed to the development agreement for Perman site, would you be able to complete that project? So those are two questions.
So the reason we need to do it all at the same time, this is from kind of direction of HUD, which is, and the Surplus Lands Act, which is tying all the parcels together. The Surplus Lands Act which is tying all the parcels together so that we can use the affordable housing mechanism to finance lot two if we were to just do one lot at a time we couldn't get those mechanisms and these projects are no longer economically feasible so we are not getting all of so we're doing the the global DA right now but we're actually the development disposition agreement um the mechanism of when we get these properties is when we go to pull a permit on these properties so we we are spending millions of dollars in the in the planning and processing um part and and part of us pulling a permit is then us actually buying the property from the city at that point in time so if we do not hit these metrics um and kind of performance milestones that are laid out that that window closes on us essentially is that is that correct sorry to put you on the spot Tom but you probably can uh speak to it a little bit better.
That's why I would not recommend to council that we change any of the deadlines that are currently in the DA because we do want to hold you accountable for that.
So I guess you answered the question so you're intending to use all the parcels as security for the construction of all the phases or is each project only secured by the land underneath it?
It each at a time.
Can you speak loud?
One at a time yeah there's we're not looking to secure all of them or own all of them we we only will get ownership or control of that project once we hit those milestones so there is no cross collateral cross collateralization or anything like that it's it's one at a time.
Okay.
That goes back to the that's the agreement.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay thank you.
Mr. Cordero?
I I was already aware of what you're talking about but I didn't want to interrupt on and it's surprising what we can learn by just listening so there's a couple of other things that I learned here tonight and uh I would just like to encourage that we move on and decide on a vote here.
Mr. Yost any comments?
Yes Madam Mayor during the last couple of hour maybe and a half we've been talking about incentives and we're talking about revenue but there's an item that hasn't been discussed that is expenditures ongoing expenditures uh when we talk about solving the we're talking about fire please it just we're talking about impact fees not the actual need for ongoing services to these new development and while the number seems to be very high we need to add the the expenditures to the equation and I look at this shit that was provided to us and uh it just doesn't say this I mean we can we we would become a rich city by building more developments basically that's the equation we build we make money and that's not the case I mean we can look at Bakersfield Oxnard and other places they build 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 but that doesn't mean that they have the best police the best fire the best parks so we don't suddenly have a ton a lot a ton of lot of money to afford that but developers developments cost cost money to everybody in the city and this shit doesn't reflect that so I would say that there are zero chances of that in the first three or four years that was presented we're gonna make the uh we can get back the five almost five million dollars in in revenue this is a gross revenue before expenses so also if there's a revenue on property values figures are equitable I mean I'm taking what it says here for you know it's accurate it says that post-construction value so that means that what is going to cause this development what is built is going to be more than two hundred million dollars so my point is that developers can afford this project without incentives like anybody else in the city of Santa Maria all the other people in the in the room if they live in Santa Maria you will need to pay the full price of every single project that you have in your home in your neighborhood so watching you know everybody can come in and check it out and watching us giving uh incentives to to one or two people or two or three developments I don't think that's fair and for that reason uh I'm voting not on this project frankly I would like to see another proposals or once you involve incentives that's taxpayers' money that's when I mean I am all for building I'm all for you know we need it but not at the expense of the taxpayers' money and uh as I mentioned development does doesn't pay for itself and uh let's not tie ourselves to the project for years and years to come because once we sell this this land is gone so let's get to the right project at the right price for our city and for constituents.
Okay um going back years and years when we were doing focus groups and we were doing all kinds of planning for the streetscape and we had across the street just sitting there it is not there it's not bringing us money right now it's not even bringing a zero because we are having to maintain it we are having to pay for it and and so that's on us and the city when all these focus groups games came together over the years people in the live we gathered in the library we gathered uh in the mall and people came in and decided what they wanted this to look like downtown when the mall came in downtown was flattened so all the businesses downtown were given the option you can go into the mall if you would like and it's going to be really good for you and I my husband and I were probably two of of a very few of a handful that really opposed the mall coming in we did not see that that was going to be that great for the city of Sanria the city council at the time thought it was wonderful they built the mall um they did the bridge thinking that was going to connect the east side and the west side and and so the businesses in town that went into the mall eventually got went broke and that was same as smart shoes the western wear and I probably Nancy you could probably give me a few more that that this happened to um people you know I when I talk to people they want to see that charm coming back to Santa Maria they want to see downtown built they want to see it vibrant and it's been dead for a long time now you have the the surplus land so we as a city have to offer it first to the state and that's part of the rules so so like people's self-help housing or the housing authority could have come in and built something there and they didn't they didn't apply for this if they had you'd have a bunch of houses and apartments you would have a dead downtown because all you would have are living spaces you wouldn't have the amenities you wouldn't have the restaurants you wouldn't have a place to maybe go have a sandwich or go have a a glass of wine or the coffee shops you would have none of that there so now we have this downtown that people really want to do something with so different firms applied I don't even know who all the firms were and the burning group was selected and so to revitalize the downtown you know I've heard from people in the high-rise here saying we need a grocery store downtown or we need this downtown and and they don't have anything downtown it's dead and I don't know how long I can't even remember how many years it's been dead twenty years but so we have the option we can leave it there um I don't think a group is going to come in and even want to do anything because when we put together the downtown specific plan there was incentives listed in there these were the rules of the game you're supposed to go by and now we have someone saying well I don't like those rules so hell with that and I think it's really important that if we're going to do something in downtown Santa Maria we do something that is very very nice and I I will support it I I may be in the minority here but another thing the city of Santa Maria applied for a HEAT grant to do the infrastructure downtown had we not done that you could not build anything we have the um it was the California Hotel and Town Center Hotel that burnt down displaced several 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 people and families and someone wanted to come in and build a hotel there and they wanted to build it larger and taller the infrastructure here would not sustain that you couldn't do it so we applied for grants we saw we weren't going to build anything here unless we the city did that we applied for the grant we got the grant to do the infrastructure and I I can't remember how far west the infrastructure goes those are pipes that are over a hundred years old so you know I I I don't understand if we're not going to revitalize the downtown um and and we said that whoever the we was to select the burning group because that was the closest that we thought we were going to come to what we wanted in Santa Maria it was not this council it was a prior council but all those incentives were listed so those were the rules of the game and now somebody wants to change that and I think it's unfortunate because you're going to have we need housing when you don't build and this is plain economics one-on-one supply and demand and if you're not going to build housing everything's going to go up everyone talks about affordable housing we are building so much affordable housing in Santa Maria right now and and if we don't continue the rents are going to continue continue to go up and they will go up like somebody told me that our rents were higher here in Santa Maria than they were in San Luis Obispo so I am going to support this I think this is good I think it's very innovative I think um we have a firm that's willing to come in here I'll tell you what I don't think a firm's going to even touch us if we don't support this I wouldn't um I um oh the only thing I wanted to ask was the church parking lot we never figured out I don't know if we figured out how much of that parking lot belongs to the church and how much belongs to the city and I'm sure you have figured that out by now or not? Chung?
Madam Mayor I do not have that information available.
Okay I'm sorry I I should have asked you earlier but um but I think it's really important that you know that people self-help housing the housing authority did not apply to do anything downtown but we would not have what is being proposed by the burning group if they had done that so and I'll tell you what if 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 you are following at all what are what the mandates coming down from the state on housing if you aren't following that you should be because the state can come in and do anything they want to on on land surplus land and if if you recall that it's a is that Santa Maria way SB thirty five?
Yes.
The state came in and built that big monstrosity and got the sea trains and stacked them up on top of each other the state come in came in they bought that property a ministerial permit over the counter and they can do anything they want they didn't have to have the parking we had no control we are losing the local control to the state they did as much parking they said that oh people at thirty five over thirty five ah they don't drive anymore so we don't have to have that many parking places look what they've done to our streets if you don't believe me everyone complains about our streets that are those are state mandates on housing and if that land is left like this the state will come in and you're going to get whatever the state wants to give you and it is not going to be a quality project I can I can guarantee you I I go on a meeting and it's on Sundays at four o'clock with people throughout the state and the horror stories that are going on we sit in this nice little bubble here in Santa Maria and 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 we have our warts we have our problems and we know that but boy I'll tell you what um the state is going to give you whatever the state wants to give you and you we will not have a choice because when they want to do the accessory dwelling units the council said okay but the the guy living in the ADU has to be related to the person in the in the main residence well one year went by and the governor said uh-uh you can't do that anymore and so then we couldn't and and like I'm saying local control is is gone and so that's all it's my lecture. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you. In addition to what the mayor just told you about the project over on Skyway initially and I don't remember the numbers maybe Chung does there was about a hundred more people that were going to be there and not one parking place they didn't have to supply one parking place people from the city negotiated with the developer we got some parking places but not enough for every one of them and I'm sure that the transportation people here in town will end up putting a a a public transportation stop very close by there so we have actively involved ourselves with trying to make it better and and done done some things to it but as the mayor alludes to they don't care you're just going to get what they give you and take it and there's nothing we can do about it so it's it's a difficult conundrum for us to deal with and not have any control over because they just build it walk away the the police the fire the all these things that we're discussing here today is of no consequence to them they don't give us any money for the police they don't give us any money for the fire they don't give us any of that stuff you just inherited the project and that's it and here we're getting some participation from the builders uh to do this and I I think that it's a long time in coming and we need to try our best to move forward because a hundred percent of nothing is nothing and if we want to continue to push this like this and continue to collect a hundred percent of nothing we can do that that's very easy for us to do I think it's a bad move but I think it we can do that but I think that it's the wrong move for us to make and all the questions that were brought up here tonight are valid questions and have been answered uh and I look forward to moving forward with uh with the rest of the evening and 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 what we can do with this project perhaps.
You'd be surprised. I want to finish up on that SB thirty thirty five um and and this was funny because I came into the office one day and our city manager told me that I kept asking when is it going to be done I want to see what it's going to look like well they had a little hangup they put the sewer pipe in and it didn't match the sewer pipe in the city it was too small so this is so what they wanted to do they wanted to put a pipe over one thirty five and have a pumping truck on the other side for the sewer so of course we said no you can't do that well they they didn't want to go to Caltrans because they knew Caltrans would take a long time so they had to go to Caltrans Caltrans says fine you have to go under underneath one thirty five we're not going to disrupt one thirty five which they didn't they they were supposed to be in there last December that's when they were supposed to be in there so that's taxpayer money guys and it costs the taxpayers much more and I don't let's say we're but we're I think they've been in now for maybe a month month and a half I don't know Chung you would know but they made so many mistakes and you know I'm just telling you I could tell you horror stories that go on in different parts of the state and when they build something and and it takes millions of dollars and then when you divide it up and you figure there is eighty units in this multi-million dollar apartment which is like four hundred fifty thousand dollars a unit that's more than the median house was in Santa Maria when this one apartment building was built and it was built with taxpayer money and so they they just do this all the time anyway Ms. Soto go ahead.
Yes thank you um I believe that rejecting the project would be really short-sighted of this council um the project from what I'm seeing will bring in long-term revenue through new property and sales tax from the housing businesses and public spaces um as these empty parking lots and empty buildings sit they are not generating any revenue on the contrary they are costing the city money and the data is there to support that urban revitalization infill is not only the best way to revitalize parts of a community but it also has a lot of advantages in comparison to sprawl development which I think was what council member Escobedo was talking about how development doesn't necessarily generate more revenue and he's right especially if it's sprawl development however However, infill data clearly shows that it actually does the contrary. It's like one of the only types of development that actually generates revenue because of the amount of revitalization that it creates within that part of the community. Though, the, I mean, I think that the concerns are valid in terms of, um, the current economic state of the city. The budget deficit is what I've been hearing my colleagues, you all talk a lot about, and the concerns about, like, are we, are we giving large one-time tack, um, one-time incentives to, to developers through these developer fees? And I think that if there is a way for us to negotiate with Vernon where they would be able to pencil in the cost for fire and PD, I think that that is something that I would be able to support in moving forward with this project. Um, and then in terms of the concerns around affordability and housing, I mean, we need to, I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again, the city is not in the business of building housing. Some cities are, we've chosen not to be. And if that is the, if that is the direction that, i- if that's where we're currently at, then I think it is in our best interest as a city to partner with developers, provide certain incentives at times, so that, that housing of affordability can be developed. Um, and, you know, at the end of the day, the city of Santa Maria alone doesn't have a hundred and fifty million dollars to pour into the revitalization of the downtown. But by us partnering with Vernon, that revitalization effort is very well a possibility. And so if I can get a commitment from Vernon that they will cover, and they will try to pencil that two hundred thousand dollar of police and fire, two hundred plus fifty thousand dollars of police and fire, um, and if there could be some wiggle room around the number of affordable housing units that could be, if they can be added, then you have a third vote in making this project happen.
So, I, um, made this clear at the last meeting. Whenever you provide housing, you also need to provide the services that come with the housing and servicing the people that be there, that are there. So, we're talking about police, fire, you have to provide recreation for the residents, you have to provide a library, we have to provide employment centers, right? And so those are the costs that I was concerned with, which is why I asked, how long will it take for us to offset the fee incentive that we're giving you? The answer was one point seven five years. The time to offset the fee and land incentive that we're giving you, it's gonna take us three point seven six years, which is why I was asking, when are you gonna build the hotel? Because that will help us offset that cost to the city, because we do have to provide services when people come and live there, right? And so it is important that we look at the revenue, we're gonna get one point three annually in revenue for the use, and we're gonna recover two point three million incentives in less than two years, if it all goes to plan, right? And if it doesn't, then I hope the Vernon Group says, "We're in over our head, we can't do this, we need to, um, roll it back and come back to the city so we can work together." But I, just like last time, my question was, you know, we need to cover the services. We cannot carry the services for the developer, because as I did the math here, six hundred units at even eighteen hundred dollars a month in rents, that's a million dollars in rents. I think that the city shouldn't be short-changed in terms of getting us the fire, the police, the library, the wrecking parks, services that we will be providing to your residents as all cities do, right? It's our job to do that. And so that is my concern, and I'm thankful to you guys for your presentation, it was very detailed, you answered all my questions, but that's really, the bottom line is, I don't want the city to carry the burden while we wait the three point seven six years.
You know, but at the same time, this is not all gonna happen at one time, it's a gradual thing. But right now, it's zero. When it's built, the property value will go up, and so property taxes always stay great. I mean, other things may go up and down, but the property taxes are, are really great, they'll be great then. Anyway.
If I could add one thing, the three point seven six years is based off of Lot 1, 2, and 3. In addition to what we're looking at doing there is the Fallis redevelopment, and also the Boot Barn redevelopment, and subsequent 222 Main Street, et cetera. So, if you, if you count those privately-owned parcels, I think that could be viewed as accelerating that, that timeline.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Vernon Group.
Okay. There's a motion and a second.
Oh, wait, with the caveat that they pencil in the two hundred plus.
Two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
For our police and fire.
I think police shows.
Madam Mayor, you have a comment.
Okay, one minute, I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Ms. Escobedo.
We keep talking about the impact fees. So, as I mentioned at the beginning, I'm not against development, we need it, we need builders, we need houses, we need all of it, that's for sure. But when it comes along on incentives, I know it was not, I was not in the council when that happened, but that doesn't mean I have to just fall back and say, "Okay, it was how it is, and now it is how it is, and just keep going, and just vote for it." So, I think it's a, it's a, it's not the right way to, or right direction that we need to go. And as I said, this is gonna be a huge development, this is gonna be a ton of money, more than at least two hundred, more than two hundred million dollars property. Yeah, the land is, is, doesn't cost zero, costs thousands of dollars. Even if you didn't use it, I've never seen a property going downhill in the center of a town, so that costs money. And building this idea that if we don't build, uh, something there, it's, they're gonna come and build affordable housing, and it's just gonna become this and that, I don't think that's the right way to, uh, present it to the public. And, uh, I would be supportive of this project, or these kind of projects, if it wasn't for the fact that we cannot afford, the city, to, to take the burden of the ongoing costs of bringing thousands of people to downtown. And, uh, I don't think it's fair for the residents that have to pay full price for it. So, I stayed, I stayed, uh, I know that there is a vote and.
A motion and a second.
So, yeah.
I need clarification on the motion. Okay, so I have two numbers on the spreadsheet, Chung. For police, I show that the annual general fund program allocations, right? And then I see the cost that the city's gonna pay for police. What is the number that they, that the Vernon Group is committing to for fire and police?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so I wanna make sure there's a distinction between the development impact fees.
Right.
Versus the fees, I mean, the ongoing costs. So, development impact fees are intended to pay for future facilities. So, for police and fire, many times that's a building equipment. So, that subsidy is a one-time subsidy.
Okay.
The ongoing operations are from sales tax, property tax, all the other revenue that comes from, uh, the typical revenues that we get. So, that's, that's ongoing, so the one point three is property tax, sales tax, that's ongoing, that's intended for operations.
So, that means that that would come for the taxpayer's part, the ongoing cost?
That's from the, the new activity that's generated from the new uses, from the new residents spending money.
It's basically sales tax in that part of the city.
Mm-hmm.
If that's part of it, that's part of it.
Okay.
My question.
My question. And a second, let's get the answer on that.
I still, I need, what is the Vernon Group committing to with the number that Ms. Soto is talking about? Do you guys have that number?
We will, uh, commit to paying a hundred percent of the police and fire fees, of what they are.
Thank you, whatever they are.
The impact fees or ongoing?
The impact fees.
We're absolutely paying the ongoing, I mean, there's no question about that. We're paying our taxes and that.
That's what I understood at the last meeting, where ongoing impact, or ongoing fees for police and fire that this, that, that are needed for this development.
Specifically fifty percent of, uh, police is a hundred and twelve thousand, and fire is a hundred and fifty-four thousand.
And those are. Just to be clear, those are impact fees, those are not ongoing operational costs.
And it's one payment.
It's one time, one payment.
The ongoing is significantly more than that on an annual basis.
It's all over a million dollars.
And that's not being subsidized.
Nope.
No.
Correct.
It's not being subsidized.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
And the city council is now going to adjourn into a closed session. Madam Clerk, can you read the closed session item?
Yes, I think we're gonna continue item 12B to the next meeting.
Oh, oh, wait, wait.
We need to vote on.
Oh, we need, we need to vote on the continuation?
Yes.
Yes, you would need a motion to continue 12B.
I note that we continue the budget item.
Second.
It's a motion and a second to continue the budget item. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, city council will now adjourn in closed session. Madam Clerk, can you read the closed, plus, the closed session item?
Yes. Fifteen A, Public Employee Recruitment, City Manager pursuant to California Government Code 54957-B1.
Thank you.